The meeting is called to order and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Getting rusty, I haven't done that in a while.
All right, and we will begin the meeting like we always do with public audience. But it will be a little bit different this time because we asked members of the public to email their comments to our town clerk Erica Butler, ebutler@simsberry CT.gov. And we do have quite a few, so I've asked Sean to tag team these with me. And I will read the first one from Wanda Coleman. Dear Selectmen, please do whatever you can to preserve Simsbury's open space. Our beautiful open spaces are necessary to the survival of life on this planet that are being exploited at an alarming rate all around this area. Open space is best left alone because Mother Nature knows best. Such open spaces will not cost the town money to maintain. If enjoyment of the outdoors must be part of the deal, a simple Native American-style footpath can easily be maintained by volunteers. Our village and all those in the Farmington River watershed were settled here because of the nature surrounding it. For thousands of years, the bounty of the very things that sustain life of America stripped our lands, overhunted and fished, and there was hardly an old tree left in New England. Thanks to nature and the natural restoration of our environment, nature has made a comeback. The river, streams, the open spaces, the woods, farms, and open meadows in Simsbury are its real beauty. Please protect our environment and precious open spaces. Signed, Wanda Coleman.
All right, and Eric, can we just have everyone else on mute? Just while we're on this part.
That's a good reminder. Anyone who's talking, just put yourselves on mute.
All right, so I have a letter from Heather Evans Dyke here. Good evening. I am reaching out to you to express my concern regarding open space in Simsbury. Open space helps foster long-term resiliency for communities, including our own. A contributing factor as to why my family decided to move to Simsbury in 2014 was the well-preserved open space, making up trails, forests, and abundance of foliage. Open natural space helps keep our community healthy as well. Now more than ever, we should acknowledge the importance of preserving nature. I also want to address claims that open space costs our town money. The general public should note that open space we already own is not costing us additional money and is not the driving force in a budget increase. It is our responsibility to advocate for our environment. We must protect our forests as they protect us. Kind regards, Heather. And Margaret Evers Dyke.
This next letter is from Helen Peterson. Greetings to all of you on the Board of Selectmen, town staff, and Simsbury neighbors. May you be safe and healthy during these challenging times. I address this issue today as a member of the community, but also serve on the Open Space Committee. In the submission form, item four suggests that the Board of Selectmen will consider referrals to the land use commissions as well as the Open Space Committee. Respectfully, I request that you do so after this informational presentation so that such an important acquisition process can be thoroughly and properly vetted. I heartily endorse this acquisition effort and look forward to study and explore all aspects during the referral process with the Open Space Committee. This acquisition speaks volumes to the land conservation ethic fully supported by the people of Simsbury time and time again. This parcel simply fits and adds value to our town's conservation profile in both the natural portion, as it abuts and complements the McLean Game Refuge, and the opportunity to expand local farming into the future. At first look, the 24 acres to be set aside for active playing fields seem thoughtfully located. Conservation of open lands is the ultimate win-win for all of us, our health, our quality of life, and the life of our endangered planet. Some closing information and reminders. Throughout all our community's conservation efforts, studies have proven repeatedly and convincingly a high value and low cost of natural open space rather than the higher cost to a municipality of developed land. These studies are readily updated and specific ones can be identified during the vetting process. In the project submission, it mentions the past partnership of the Trust for Public Land with Simsbury during the Ethel Walker Woods Project '07 to '14. It is historically important to remind you that an earlier such partnership of our town with the TPL successfully occurred in the early 1990s when we acquired the Baker property east of Iron Horse Boulevard, now known and enjoyed as Simsbury Meadows. I'm excited to work with you, the town, and especially the TPL on this acquisition effort. And thank you for the opportunity to share these preliminary thoughts with you today. Best always, Helen.
We waited a lifetime for this moment. Joan Coe, Board of Selectmen, meeting April 6, 2020. The Board of Selectmen should reevaluate the budget with a zero increase. It is not time for political favors and increasing debt. With the COVID-19 virus upon us and with so many unknowns, it would be prudent to eliminate all nonessential expenditures in the budget. This is unprecedented times and the budget should not be unresponsive to the taxpayers. The town should not have any expenditures in land acquisitions since the Meadowwood project brings in $200,000 a year in revenue. As the country is leaning towards a recession, revenues will be scarce, income and property values will be greatly reduced. The schools have established a pay-for-play policy. Now is the time to require any enhancements on town and education properties that directly benefit a group should be paid by that group. The taxpayers can no longer pay for nonessential expenditures. This is not the time to encumber the taxpayers' increased taxes and debt. There will be a dramatic, no, excuse me, there will be a drastically reduced revenue stream from the state. This is not the time to kick the can down the road until the next budget cycle. There are several arbitration hearings continuing with a great cost to the taxpayers. Both Robin Newton and Sergeant Jason Trombley's hearings have had costly expenditures for the labor attorney with $275 an hour available expenditures in the thousands and costly transcripts of the hearings that have not been budgeted. The final outcomes of these hearings will give both employees a favorable assessment, charging the town and the police department with abuse of power. The Commission on Human Rights and Opportunities will hold a hearing on the merits of Gertrude Aducey's complaint against the library that will be cost to the taxpayers. I would like to report that I have nine outstanding Freedom of Information requests that have not been fulfilled. All of these requests were prior to the COVID-19 issue. The executive session attorney-client privileged document, not subject to disclosure, legal opinion TM, Police Commission duties, is a violation of the Freedom of Information Act. An opinion on an interpretation of a state statute in the Town Charter is not exempt under executive session. Since the Boards and Police Commission continue to violate the Freedom of Information Act, it is time to have an informational meeting with the Boards and Commissions on the Freedom of Information Act. The town has continued to send emails on social distancing. However, the Simsbury Farms golf course appears to disregard the request for one person in a cart. This picture taken during the time of the COVID-19 virus shows people in the cart. I presume there's a picture. There it is.
Yep, there it is.
Why is the golf course exempt and tennis and pickleball not exempt? Chief Bolter, when addressing the Board of Selectmen, stated that he and Lieutenant Siffo were the duty officers for the police department. Why was Chief Bolter a duty officer and not Lieutenant Cheem? Due to the COVID-19 virus, the Simsbury police officers are given protective masks. However, many of the police officers have beards that do not allow the mask to be secured on their face, giving the officers little protection. What is the police department's policy on beards? Now that Mike Wolling, superintendent, is retiring, it would be a good time to review the need for professional management to reduce costs. Many towns and private clubs have gone with professional management, and it has proven to be very desirable. The town is elevating the need for professional ambulance service that has full-time paid staff and does not use volunteers that are not always reliable. Farmington Avon use AMR and have been satisfied with their responses. AMR ambulance service does not receive any revenue from the towns. The Board of Selectmen should be presenting a budget that is a reflection of uncertainty of future revenues and should not be blind-sighted in these uncertain times. It is time to bring a zero increase in the budget and reduce debt. All of my comments will be posted on Simsbury Patch, Twitter at Joan Coe, and News Feed on Facebook. Thank you for listening.
The next one is from Diane Nash. Why suddenly has open space fallen into disfavor, even attacked by Board of Finance people suggesting, if it costs so much, sell it? Is it due to a mistaken job description that included natural open space with parks and recreation? The combining of open space and parks and recreation inflates the data by adding all the acreage and skews the budget by grouping maintenance and upkeep for our active areas, pools, golf courts, tennis courts, and defined parks with maintenance on natural open space lands. It misleads consultants who combine the TOS open space acreage with other towns' P and R acreage and then recommends more personnel be added and more dollars spent. The survey was done and the question was asked. The public wants nature. A far different kind of attention and far less expensive is needed for natural open space. When people on the Board of Finance see this budgetary request for more money, more personnel, they're led to believe it's for open space, natural open space. Before we even think about selling a single parcel, the Parks and Rec director should be required to separate any and all requests for maintenance of natural open space and carefully review all of these costs. Bring these proposed actions to the Open Space Committee to endorse which ones, if any, they support, and only then should money be allocated from perhaps a contingency budget fund. The request to the Board of Finance should simply be made for the defined parks by parcel and active recreation areas so it can be carefully reviewed as to what is a legitimate expense and what is nice to have. Extra personnel requested should be denied and maybe even in-place staff should be reviewed to see if there's a more efficient way to do business. We've always used volunteer groups. Example, SLT cleanups on their properties, the Flower Bridge, the beautification plantings, the free concerts. Why suddenly has Parks and Rec Group padded their budget with these inclusions? It may be a misunderstanding of what the P and R director was hired to do. It may be an ask for the sun and happy-to-get-the-moon way of formulating a budget. Either way, for both job description and budget clarity, it needs to be redefined and before damage is seriously done.
Ashley Burke. I am writing to you as a homeowner on Clifton Drive in Simsbury and a concerned citizen of the town of Simsbury. After hearing about the planned development of open space on Hoskins and Firetown Road, I had to say I was devastated for several reasons. When we were house hunting as a young couple with a baby on the way, my husband and I were drawn to Simsbury's quaint downtown in charm. We were lucky enough to find a home in this beautiful area and now, several years later with four small children, we have come to appreciate our town even more. There aren't too many towns with the perfect balance of convenience and rural charm, and I believe that preserving open space is so important to maintain that feeling. The fields and tobacco barns have immense value as a trademark of our region in Connecticut and New England, and I can't tell you how much I love driving by them around town. From my parents' point of view, I am also concerned, or excuse me, from my parents' point of view, I am also concerned about the impact of giant housing developments such as Meadow would have had on our school system. My children are currently in squadron line and have already dealt with overcrowding of kindergarten this year. With a massive influx of family and children, I would imagine the burden would negatively affect the quality of our town's highly-ranked schools from elementary to the high school level. Preserving land as open space for our community, I believe, is one of the best investments our town can make. By acquiring the Meadowwood property, the town of Simsbury will have an incredible asset for years and generations to come. Please strongly consider these sentiments and approve the finances necessary to complete this acquisition. Your town citizens will be truly grateful. Thank you, Ashley Burke.
This next letter is from Judy and John Schaefer, Simsbury Board of Selectmen. We're very concerned with the recent discussions about the town divesting itself of some open space parcels. Simsbury's open space is important to the image and experience of Simsbury. The ongoing costs of open space, especially natural open space, is low, particularly when one considers the benefits that Simsbury residents gain from it. The town can save money on current natural open spaces such as Ethel Walker Woods, Stratton Brook, and Onion Mountain by leaving them as they are and not improving them. That will save the capital expenditure and the maintenance costs for hard facilities. Many residents have worked very hard to conserve that natural open space for nature and passive human activities. We urge you to preserve our open space land and not get rid of it. Thank you for your service.
All right, this one is from Jonathan Call. Dear Town of Simsbury representative, I would like it known that I oppose any development in Simsbury except high-tech manufacturing. Nothing can be more detrimental to my standard of living than another condo complex, except the new Meadowwoods development. Don't do that. Make sure you tell anyone who wants to live on that land about the one is a challenge, the chemicals. So it's dibromethane, 1, 2, 3, trichloropropene. Eric, I can see now why you picked the order you did. 1, 2, dibromo, 3, chloropropene, DBCP contamination. I apologize for butchering those words. And we don't need a grocery store. Say goodbye to the grocers that have served Simsbury all these years. If we had built high-tech manufacturing, we would have top-paying jobs that require PhDs all the way down to the lowest-paying jobs. Those businesses don't call the police or need teachers. The people go home at night and have a stake in the community, might even have some ventilators or N95 masks. Also, if there is ever any infrastructure grants that come to Simsbury, a perfect shovel-ready project is fiber-optic cabled to every household and business. You can't imagine the productivity gains that would take place for every second of away time saved by having this bandwidth. Don't take money from the cable company to do nothing. You know what I'm talking about? Last, the Simsbury government TV covers the town meetings very well and is informative, but there is a problem. The citizens are so busy with work and family, they don't have time to watch. And also, if you watch, you can't tell what way each representative voted. A great solution is a simple Excel table that had the date, proposal, motion, who proposed it, and the yes/no vote on each representative. This would make it a lot easier to vote come election time. Thank you for the consideration of these options, Jonathan Nell.
And this next letter is from Susan Brackwitz to the Board of Selectmen. I have the impression that the unfortunate inclusion of open space in the Culture, Parks, and Rec budget has caused people to think that open space is much more expensive to maintain than it actually is. I strongly doubt that the cost of maintenance of town-owned open space left in a natural condition is anywhere near the cost of CEP staff, programs, constant maintenance of buildings and parks and playing fields, et cetera. I don't think that getting rid of any open space would add significantly to the money available for CPR. Ideally, open space and CPR should be two separate budget items since they're very different and all have very different needs. I think that one of the most important things that makes Simsbury such a special place to live is the amount and quality of open space we have. Before I got involved with the Ethel Walker Woods Preservation Project, I had no idea how many townspeople were intensely interested in keeping that forest and its wetlands intact and how hard and how long they were willing to work for it. Ever since then, town referenda and questionnaires and surveys have shown that taxpayers in Simsbury place a high value on natural open space in general. Some of its benefits are largely unseen ecosystem services such as carbon storage in trees and soils, protections of soils, and the moisture and nutrients they contain, cleaning of air and water, cooling in summer, and modulation of flooding events. In addition, these wild places together constitute a treasure house of wild things, plants, animals, fungi, as well as the tiny organisms that are essential for keeping everything running, probably many of which are as yet unknown to science. But that's not all. People who spend time in these places feel that they make a major contribution to their quality of life by enhancing their physical and mental health. As our town population continues to climb, more of these quiet places, not fewer, will be needed to continue to offer these important benefits. Clearly, our open space more than earns its keep. Please do not decrease it or the funding for it. Sincerely, Sue Brackwitz.
This next one's from Eugenia Ischleman. Some questions regarding plans for the soccer fields and the potential Meadowwood open space acquisition. I am a resident of the Clifton Road neighborhood. I see there are plans for soccer fields adjacent to our neighborhood. My concerns are, one, how do you plan to mitigate the potential increased traffic hazard in this area that will result from the addition of these fields? We already have an ongoing issue with cars exceeding the speed limit around the corner in front of Clifton Road. Two, what are your plans for noise pollution from these fields? Will there be set hours for the use of these fields? Will we have to deal with noise from the several portable gasoline generator field lights? We have a nice, quiet neighborhood with beautiful skyline views that would be disrupted by increased lights and noise. Regards, Eugenia.
This next one is from Danielle Deramo. I'd like to communicate my support of open space in the town and my strong feelings that we should be proactively purchasing more open space and we should not be selling or dispensing of any of our current open space. I moved to Simsbury because of its rural and bucolic nature, and I've been shocked and disappointed over the past five years we very quickly lost so much of the beauty of our town to development. It literally makes me sick to drive down Route 10 and to see the extent of the development monstrosities instead of the beautiful vistas and fields. There have been so much rampant development that the town is losing its character. There has been a total disregard of wildlife habitat, the importance of biodiversity, and the importance of land conservation. I feel that the town has forgotten that the Open Space Committee was set up in 1996 because of the concern about the dwindling open land and the negative impact that was having on the town. Simsbury was a community that valued its natural resources and wanted to, one, maintain the rural and bucolic attributes of the town; two, ensure that the scenic iconic landmarks and vistas are preserved; three, ensure development is countered by adequate buffer space, wildlife sanctuary space, while preserving aesthetic quality, preserving fields, trees, and plants; four, protect our natural forest, wetlands, our tobacco barns, stone walls, streams, rivers, and wetlands. I'd like to remind this committee that these things are of the utmost importance to the majority of the town. It was true in 1996 and it is even more imperative now. We want our land to remain natural. We want to stop the rampant development, and we certainly do not want to lose any of the open space we have currently. We would like to see the town take advantage of grants and proactively purchase more open space before it disappears for good. We cannot lose any open space for any reason and we must think of ways to counter overdevelopment by the town by proactively purchasing more open space. I don't mean recreational space. I mean fields and woodlands left in a natural state so that we can protect the environment, have a positive impact on global warming, and leave a legacy for future generations.
This one's from Garrett Campanetti. I understand the town has an interest in purchasing the Meadowwood property and with the overcrowding of the school system we face, I am extremely interested in making sure that this happens instead of more housing being irresponsibly built. I would like to get involved in the future of the Meadowwood property. What is the best avenue? Thank you, Gary.
This next letter is from Joel Schlitzer. To whom it may concern, as a longtime Simsbury resident, I strongly support a purchase by our town of the Meadowwood open space property. My opinion is based on experience as a former board member of Simsbury Land Trust as well as extensive research and involvement with the North Simsbury Neighborhood Association. Simsbury would benefit most if the Meadowwood open space property is owned by our town to be used as playing fields, potential farmland, and open space. Current and future Simsbury residents will thank you for such a wise choice.
This next one's from Stephen and Kathy McDonald. As relatively new residents of town, we purchased a home in 1979. We have seen many changes in the land use over the years. The increase in taxes as a result of new single-family homes has been a concern of ours for many years. My personal experience as a licensed professional civil engineer for over 40 years has led me to the conclusion that open space acquisition is typically a significant long-term tax savings for municipalities while providing outstanding recreational opportunities for the general public as well as our children. It is with this thought that we strongly encourage the Board of Selectmen to consider the acquisition of the Meadowwood property. The expenditure of town funds, while significant is, in the long-term financial benefit to the town, while providing for the future residents of town. This is a unique opportunity and we totally support the purchase of the Meadowwood property and encourage the Board to do so as well. Sincerely, Stephen and Kathy.
This next letter is from Derek Mogg. And for anyone who were mispronouncing your name, I apologize. Folks have tough names. I encourage you to give us a pronouncer because I want to get it right. I'm writing in support of the proposal to acquire a portion of the Meadowwood project property. As a parent of a current Simsbury soccer club player and former youth soccer and lacrosse coach, I know that Simsbury generally needs more athletic fields. Further, buying land on Hoskins Road would provide additional sites close to Curtis Park and Iron Horse Boulevard, which serve as hubs for statewide soccer and lacrosse tournaments. This potential complex would also relieve some of the demand on the fields at Squadron Line School and other schools. Acquiring this land would also preserve a valued open space area and vistas in northern Simsbury. My family lives on Clifton Drive near the Meadowwood property. Seeing the sunrise over the field in the morning and watching wildlife as we drive or run by some of the experiences or run by are some of the experiences that we value about our larger neighborhood, particularly since the recent installation of the solar panel complex close by. Preserving the Meadowwood property as open space should be a priority to help preserve the character of this part of Simsbury. Thank you for your consideration.
This next one is from Susan Messino. To the Selectmen, I'm writing as an individual, but I am also a member of the Simsbury Grange and the Open Space Committee. Thank you for preserving and serving our town during this challenging time. Thank you for reading this into the record, and I suggest that instructions for emailing public comments should be included in parentheses next to this agenda item since this is a new procedure. First, regarding the Grange, several months ago, we were approved for a series of matching grants for community resilience. This is a long-term goal, but has new urgency related to the pandemic. We are completing the first one this week, a partnership with a community garden and a little free library called Read and Seed in Hartford. You can find more information at ioby.com if you search for Grange. The garden is more than 80% funded, so we are trying to wrap it up as soon as possible because the next phase launching next week, it stipends for apprentices for farmers in Simsbury. Our local farms and farmers have never been more important. We need to support them and help them share their critical knowledge with others. Anyone is eligible to apply for these stipends and we will facilitate a match with local farmers. For more information, more information is forthcoming, but please note that the Grange is donating, not receiving any money from these grants. And Susan, I apologize. You can do this more eloquently than I can. I'll keep going here. Matching grants are possible because Simsbury is a sustainable CT town. The town itself is also eligible for matching grants. I know that several proposed projects like the Pollinator Pathway and community events would qualify for this funding and I'm happy to help with this. Second, regarding open space, our forests, our parks, our vistas, our farms, this is without question what brings people to and keeps people in Simsbury. Study after study shows the quantified long-term benefits of lower taxes, health, and quality of life. Simsbury citizens have affirmed again and again that they value open space and the most recent survey of over 1,000 people strongly expressed the value that we place specifically on natural open space for passive recreation. Even those who don't use it just want it to be there for others and for the future. We need places for pollinators, for wildlife, and just for nature. Open space is stewarded under Culture, Parks, and Recreation, and we recently embarked on a Parks and Open Space Master Plan. The master plan is not yet finalized, but major goals related to open space were to save money by one, inventory our land in identifying areas that need less mowing and maintenance; two, preventing and addressing progressive problems like erosion and invasives as possible; and three, differentiating among stewardship of natural areas like our forests and wetlands versus areas that need chronic attention like parks, fields, grasslands, and infrastructure. Additional goals were finding grants for specific projects as well as identifying those that would be best tackled by volunteers or Eagle Scouts. We are still in the process of finalizing policies on a number of open space issues and have been working on this since last summer. The budget has not been discussed in the Open Space Commission, but please note that responsible stewardship of natural open space is radically different from parks and far less costly. These beloved natural areas in town are essential building blocks in the larger landscape. We have imperiled habitats, special and threatened species, and fragile areas, and those quiet natural areas have never been more important to people. Volunteer groups are ready and willing to be regular stewards of several properties and we have more information on our town website so people know what to expect in different areas. Related to open space, there are matching grants and community partnerships that the town is eligible for and can be mobilized with a little effort. Simsbury is a town that it is today with many awards and incredible desirable community because it has almost always made thoughtful decisions about land use and leveraged the dedication of its citizens. In closing, I respect Simsbury for being fiscally conservative, economically sensitive, and taking the long view because these are the values that have brought us here and they engender our incredible spirit of community commitment, financial generosity, and volunteerism. Our values include stewardship, or excuse me, stewarding the legacy of Simsbury for the future, especially with respect to preserving important pieces of land, large and small, and protecting beautiful natural areas which bring so much value to the community.
This next letter is from David Bush. I'm writing to express my support for the purchase of the Meadowwood property. It is important that the town take advantage of this opportunity to preserve this valuable open space. This property would provide both recreational and agricultural opportunities to the town and its residents. The continued use of the land for farming is consistent with the town's rich agricultural history. Moreover, it would provide much-needed space for future athletic fields. The purchase of this property also makes good fiscal sense. A development of this size will put a strain on existing A development of this size will put a strain on existing town resources and services. In particular, the burden on the school system could be significant and very costly. Simsberry has recently seen a sizable increase in housing development and does not need a project the size of Meadowwood going forward. Simsberry has a unique opportunity to preserve this land for future generations. I fully support the purchase of the Meadowwood parcels by the town of Simsberry.
Next one's from Lauren Miller. This is the Board of Selectmen. I'm writing today to ask you for your support to increase the library's budget for materials in the fiscal year twenty one by twenty thousand dollars. Over the past ten years, the library's material budget has been essentially static while community needs have changed and the patron base has expanded. The library staff has done an exemplary job of providing high levels of service to the community with minimal budgetary resource. But a lot has happened over the past ten years and a combination of changing demographics, increased material costs and many demands for new resources has brought us to the point where the library simply cannot continue to keep pace with community needs. The Simsberry Public Library has one of the lowest amounts of expenditures on material per capita in the state. While we are justifiably proud of the library's efficiency, the lack of increase in the material budget has kept our material expenditures per per capita to five dollars and fifty-nine cents, one of the lowest among comparable libraries. A recent study which included Bloomfield, Farmington, Avon demonstrated that Simsberry is last among these local institutions when it comes to spending on library materials. I bring this to your attention not because we need to keep up with the Joneses, but because I'm concerned that without appropriate funding, library services and materials will no longer be accessible to those who need the resource, who mostly need the resources our library should provide. Simsberry is a vibrant, active community and our public library is arguably the center of this community with providing a wealth of information and programs to build community. Please help the library continue to enlighten, educate and build our community, providing accessible materials to its patrons.
And this final letter comes from Christopher Loftus. Board of Selectmen, after reading through our proposed budget and proposed budgets from surrounding towns, I've been trying to cost compare and come up with ways we can save taxpayer dollars. I've been watching and paying attention to local politics here for a long time and paying attention to things that constantly come up but never get done. As I read the proposed budget, I noticed one point two million dollars for a radio system upgrade for the police. Nobody's going to argue against the need, but one thing I have also seen when comparing other towns is that the town of Granby is also currently in the research stage of replacing their radio system as well. One very simple solution to save money would be to work together on this project between the towns. If it saves us a few dollars and we both benefit, then why not? The radios are all going to be about the same and departments always want to be interoperable anyways. So working together for the good of the people just makes sense. One more thing I've looked into myself is in the midst of all these valley towns upgrading radio systems is now the time we really start working together in the one thing I have heard over and over for many years, regionalizing our dispatch center. It is done across the state in many areas and there's no reason it can't be done here. As someone who has had lifelong experience in public safety, I've gone ahead and done my own research to the best of my abilities. To keep it simple, I'll give you the numbers I was easily able to compile. Between just Avon, Simsberry and Canton, we average about four hundred twenty-five thousand dollars of spending on dispatch center salaries with an average of five to six full-time dispatchers per town. In the Farmington Valley, between the towns of Farmington, Avon, Canton, Simsberry and Granby, we have five dispatch centers, not including separate fire district dispatchers, all doing the same job. With my firsthand experience and knowledge of the area and experience in a county system, I have no doubt these towns could easily work together. From talking to area dispatchers and comparing us to similar areas, a valley dispatch might require us to have six to nine full-time dispatchers, which at an average cost per dispatcher would cost around six hundred fifty to seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. Between the five towns and using my averages, I was able to obtain that cost per town would be about one hundred fifty to two hundred thousand dollars, saving every town at least two hundred thousand dollars. I realize most dispatchers oftentimes dual role as secretaries for the police, but I don't see why even if we hired a full-time secretary, we couldn't still save plenty of money, which as politicians, which as politicians should be one of your top priorities. I've heard every single election cycle that we have so many towns and so many services and you would do it differently if you could, but I never see any change. I'm tired of hearing about a hot tar asphalt machine that we worked together on years ago. It is time to leave your own legacy on this issue. Change never comes easy, but we didn't elect you all to do the easy stuff only. It's time to work hard to make change, set an example for others and future leaders and save the taxpayers money. That's our public comment for this evening. Again, anyone who wants to share a public comment at a future meeting, you can send an email to erica butler@ebutler@simsberry-ct.gov. Sean, I appreciate you tag teaming that with me. I don't think I'd have a voice. Appreciate it. So moving on to, we have two presentations. The first one is a nice segue from the public audience we had. It's the potential Meadowwood Open Space Acquisition. I'm gonna, in a moment, turn it over to JT Horn, who's the Senior Project Manager with the Trust for Public Land. Just a little bit of context for tonight. I don't anticipate that the Board of Selectmen will be taking any action tonight. The next step in the process would be for us to refer it to our various land use bodies for their feedback. Ultimately, this would have to go to our voters in referendum and I wouldn't anticipate that would happen until November at the earliest. So there will be plenty of time to have a very public and thorough vetting of this proposal. With that, let me turn it over to JT. I appreciate you being with us.
Great. Well, thank you, everyone. So my name's JT Horn. I'm a project manager with the Trust for Public Land. I actually work out of our Montpelier, Vermont office, but I'm pinch hitting for a colleague who's on maternity leave, Honor Lawler, who some of you may have met if you're involved with the Open Space Committee. The Trust for Public Land, if you can go to the next slide, please, Melissa. The Trust for Public Land is a nonprofit land trust and our mission is really land for people. So we pick our projects to protect places that will connect people at the outdoors, get people outside. We really favor active places with trails and even ball fields. We have a big program with city parks. We've been operating since nineteen seventy-two. We're based in California and we have a very active program in Connecticut and in our time in Connecticut since nineteen eighty-six, we've protected over seven thousand acres, over a hundred and fifty million dollars worth of land and ninety-two properties, including the Ethel Walker Woods Project. And based on the public comment, someone chimed in about an old historic Trust for Public Land project from it sounds like the early nineties that I was unaware of. So thank you. Next slide, please. So we were brought in to take a look at a new opportunity in Simsberry. It's the Meadowwood property. I think many people in the community are very familiar with this land. I'm going to talk a little bit about its significance in terms of its outdoor recreation potential and outdoor conservation potential, but I wanted to have some scene setting done by the town staff and so Mike Glidden from the Planning Department was gonna provide an overview of some of the permitting history of the site. And then I'll take the slides back over. Mike, are you on mute maybe?
If you can go back to the last slide, Melissa. It's called for two hundred ninety-six homes to be constructed with an affordability component and on eighty-eight of the proposed homes. These approvals are valid through March twentieth in twenty twenty-two. Like I said, it was approved back in two thousand eight by the court. If you go to the next slide. This was as part of the court settlement, there was some environmental cleanup that had to occur due to the residual chemicals from the historical use. So this area, this little map that you see right here is from the actual environmental report where some areas, the soils were mixed, other areas soils are exported from site. All of this was completed in two thousand and fourteen. We, as the town, we've engaged the services of a licensed environmental professional just to verify, to review the files, make sure everything's okay. It appears based on the closure reports that the site has been cleaned to residential exposure standards, which was
Mike, you're in and out. Can you? We can't hear you, Mike. Mike, can you try one more time?
Do you have me here?
Yeah, we got you now.
Okay, I'm sorry. So this slide is the, it shows up with the environmental cleanup as part pursuant to the court settlement. The site had to be cleaned to the residential exposure standards. So there was some soil that had to be removed, some that was mixed on site. All was done under the supervision of a licensed environmental professional. The town has engaged the services of a licensed environmental professional to inspect the site, review files. It really is our doing our due diligence should we purchase this property. We don't suspect that like the standards weren't followed during the cleanup. It's just, like I said, our due diligence if we were going to purchase this. So you can go to the next slide. And I'll turn it over to JT.
Great. So ultimately, our goal is to purchase the whole Meadowwood property and turn it into an open space outcome for the town of Simsberry. And I'll go through what that looks like in a couple of slides, but just to orient you, if you're not familiar with the property, it abuts the McLean Game Refuge. Some of the major access points are Firetown Road and Hoskins Road, County Road. And this is property that is owned by a subsidiary of Griffin Industrial. They're a regional publicly traded company that has done a lot of very successful development throughout the region. And our role in this transaction is to really act as a facilitator. We don't want to take any interest in the property over the long haul, but we're really transaction experts and we help communities like Simsberry achieve open space outcomes. We've, next slide, please. We've really identified the Meadowwood property as a really important thing for the community. One of the big things that was of interest is the history of the property. So this is the farm where Martin Luther King Jr. came from Georgia when he was a teenager and he spent two summers in Simsberry, working in on the farm that was there. And there was a dormitory on this property that's long since gone. But that historic aspect of Dr. King's life is an important part of the outcome we're trying to protect. We think the property really lends itself to a new community trail system with multiple new access points for various neighborhoods in and around the Meadowwood property. The history of farming there is quite amazing. The soils are very good and a portion of it we propose for continued farming. And then this also fits really well into the Simsberry landscape and the connectivity with other conserved lands. Particularly the McLean Game Refuge. My sense is that you all know the neighborhood far better than I, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep moving here, but one of the other things that we heard when we were scoping this out was the need for the new athletic fields. Soccer-type fields, ball fields. And so that's been built into this outcome as well. It's a very flat site. It lends itself to that kind of a use. And then finally, the white tobacco barns on Firetown Road, I really understand are being very important to the agricultural history and the scenery. They're sort of iconic within the community is what they've been told. And that area is proposed to do some stabilization of those structures and use that as a jumping off point for some new interpretive displays and maybe some new trails would help tell the story of Dr. King and his time in Simsberry. Next slide. So where are we in terms of this opportunity? The Trust for Public Land has negotiated initially quietly and confidentially, but now we're able to talk about it in public. A contract to acquire the whole property. It's a fully permitted site. It could be built tomorrow. There's no additional obstacles and that's quite valuable. When we looked at it from a valuation point of view, it's worth well over the six million dollar price that we've negotiated. And our contract with Griffin is an initial one-year term. We signed it in February and then a six-month extension so we could get the time we need to work with all of you in the community to design the project and run a fundraising campaign that would allow us to raise that amount of money. Importantly, the Trust for Public Land has agreed with the landowner to support a permit extension for the property just as it is today. So no new units, no changes, but just to keep the permits fresh. And we were supportive of that because the landowner didn't want to be penalized for giving us this long contract. So going to a landowner to ask to buy their house and say, I'd like to close in eighteen months is pretty unusual. In this case, because we need to run this public fundraising campaign, we asked for this long eighteen-month runway. And so the quid pro quo there is that the landowner gets some relief on expiring permits and that will have to be viewed by the various town boards and committees. It has to stand in its own merits, but we think that there's a real case to make. And again, we're just looking to preserve the status quo. Next slide. I think we had a map as the next slide, Melissa. Anyway, one of the things I wanted to show, if Melissa can get the slide up, is that we're really proposing a four-phase outcome for this property. So it's not all going to become one thing. We're really talking about dividing it into four different segments. One would be community open space, a mix of agricultural land and forest land, and that's really where you probably have your trail system. One area is a farmland preservation area, particularly on on County Road and that that would maintain the agricultural history of the site. Future athletic fields, about twenty-four acres devoted for new ball fields. And then finally, about three acres around the existing white barns on Firetown Road that would become a historic preservation focus. And one of the things that I think is important to understand is that one of the reasons we've divided the property the way we have is really it's tied to the funding strategy. So in order to raise the six million dollar purchase price, we're targeting certain grants and certain funding partners for each component. And so the town would become the owner of the whole thing, but we would partner with the Department of Agriculture on the farmland piece and the State Historic Preservation Office on the barn restoration and Martin Luther King history part of the property and with the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection on the community trails and town forest piece. And so if we could get the slides, which we seem to have lost, in there is a budget slide. And one of the things that you'll see is that we have a budget essentially tied for a funding partner, a state agency partner for the town on each of those four different outcomes. The ball fields piece would be solely funded by the town. And that that funding structure is really designed to sort of maximize the leverage for the monies that Simsberry would be asked to put in. Just a couple of final thoughts is that this is going to be a long process and this is the very first meeting where we're going public with this opportunity. And so we're really interested in community feedback. We're really interested in understanding whether this proposed plan is the right one. And then we really would love to work hand in glove with the town to march through this long process, to raise this money, to write these grants, to develop a stewardship vision for this property. And ultimately also to ask you to put up about two point two million dollars of town funds towards that six million dollar purchase price. And so we're very excited about this. We think it's a big, bold conservation opportunity. It's really of statewide significance and even national significance with the Dr. King legacy. And we would love to get this off on the right foot. And so I'm sorry we're doing it over Zoom, uh, but, uh, but it's, it's, uh, we've signed this contract. We now have, uh, the clock ticking to be able to get to the finish line. And we're, we're really hopeful that the town will be excited about this and join the Trust for Public Land in launching this project.
Well, I thank you for the overview and the presentation. Um, I wanted to open up for, to other members of the Board of Selectmen who may have questions right now.
I had one question. Um, and the map, what, we didn't see the map on, on here, but the one question I had is the parking, the athletic fields and the parking is directly across from Newberry Court. Like a whole residential neighborhood and they both seem to come right to the same point. Um, so I, I know one of the public audience, um, things mentioned, you know, impact to neighborhood. And I'm just wondering how we, you know, make sure we're not hur- hurting people's or, or getting input from those people on that. I don't know who does that, but it's, uh, you know, I guess if I live there, it's, it looked like they were like right like that. So.
Yeah. So, so I'll, I'll start and then I'll turn it over to Maria and maybe her staff, um, to, to address that. Um, I mean, a certain amount of this is just limited by the terrain and topography. And so for ball fields, you need a certain amount of open land and a certain, you know, slope in that corner of that field happens to have it. Um, it also doesn't conflict with some of the other, um, uh, like the historic preservation goals and things like that. Um, but we're hopeful that there's a, you know, this is a community engagement process. And so this early look is a, is does, was done, designed by the Trust for Public Land and the town staff with some uh, thoughtfulness, but ultimately Maria and her team needs to, uh, you know, work with the whole town and make sure that people understand it, uh, this and, and ultimately it's a decision for the whole town.
Okay.
Thanks.
Eric, it's Chris. I've got a quick question.
Go for it, Chris.
Hey, hi JT. Uh, it's, this is Chris Peters, even though I think my screen name says Christine. Uh, so on the, on the, I, I apologize for not asking this question prior, guys. I know we had seen this before, but, uh, because some of the, some of our very thoughtful residents sent in letters around, um, the use of land for agricultural purposes. And then when you look at the ten, tentative capital funding model, uh, there is, uh, money's allocated there coming from the state of Connecticut, Department of Agriculture, uh, $1.8 million. Does, does their funding from, as named in the, from agriculture, then require us to put forth a particular amount of land for agricultural use in the, in the future? Or is it just to keep it in the stewardship vein of potential agricultural use?
Yeah, Chris, it's a great question. So, uh, the partnership we envision with the State Department of Agriculture would be that the state would actually acquire a conservation easement over that portion of the property. And that conservation easement would, uh, essentially prohibit the town from, uh, you know, turning into the town, you know, uh, highway department or the new library or the new school or something like that. And it would be a farming first type easement. Um, so that their money comes with a string attached of taking a property interest. And so, uh, where we are in this process is we've sort of roughly divided up the property into its component pieces. And if the town, uh, and if the funding partners buy into this project structure, we will start the process of writing a grant for that, uh, funding that would lead to that conservation easement. And likewise, on the, uh, the open space piece that we, the funding partner would be the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. Uh, DEEP will require a conservation easement there that will require, uh, public access for, uh, hiking, for hunting, that sort of thing. Um, and so, uh, wi- with these grants come, you know, additional property interest to the state agencies that would become, uh, the partners on each piece. So it's not just a straight ahead grant. It's actually, you know, they're purchasing a certain amount of, uh, property interest in the form of an easement.
Great. Thank you so much.
And, uh, Eric, just for a quick second, if we could go back to the Clifton Fields. Um, so coincidentally, I actually learned to play soccer on the Clifton Soccer Field. So there, there was, uh, usage at that site previously, not obviously the, the tobacco fields, but, uh, the space right next to it, next to the neighborhood. So, uh, we have, we have a history of sports in that area and certainly we need to be sensitive to the residents' needs. Uh, but I'm sure we can get input there.
Eric, this is, uh, Mike Payne. One of the issues I was initially concerned about was, uh, the issue of the parking being close to Clifton. But the reality is one of the common practices in land use is you try to have driveways, uh, be, uh, in concert, concert with the, uh, uh, roads across the street so that you don't have driveways coming out and headlights going into people's homes. So, uh, we still have a long way to go before that's decided, but, uh, I do think, uh, that's something that we can work out.
Thanks, Mike. Other questions or feedback? Um, well, JT, we really appreciate you being here and, and Mike, thanks for, uh, thanks for working together on the presentation. Uh, and, uh, Maria, Melissa and all staff who've, uh, who've contributed, uh, to getting us to where we are now, which is really the beginning of the, the public process. We've been talking about the potential, uh, acquisition of the Meadowwood Open Space Parcel. And, um, as I said, as we kicked things off, eventually if it gets there, uh, this would, uh, go to referendum. Uh, we would anticipate that the earliest that would happen is in November. Uh, but this will be vetted by all of our land use boards. And, uh, my recommendation for the, for, uh, for this meeting is to keep this meeting purely informational uh, in light of everything else that's going on in our community and our country, uh, to stay focused on that. Uh, but we do have a, have a unique opportunity here, as you've heard. And, and, um, the door is, is not going to be open forever. So we are going to want to, uh, move forward, assuming the board is, is supportive. Um, any other thoughts before we move on?
Just one quick process thing. Um, so at a future meeting, uh, we're going to pose a a memorandum of understanding between the Trust for Public Land and the town, and also provide a technical assistance letter, which just are two documents that would help, um, you know, allocate uh, roles and responsibilities for this process. So I think the board will see those at a future meeting and, uh, we're happy to, you know, do additional, uh, meetings or discussions, but we're trying to lay a foundation now that allows all of us to be successful over the next 18 months.
Right. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to our, uh, next presentation, uh, item B is a proclamation for Autism Awareness Month. Uh, April is, uh, uh, every April we've celebrated Autism Awareness Month. Um, that's something that's done nationally and we've done the same thing here in Simsbury by lighting Eno Memorial Hall blue. And I wanted to, uh, read the following proclamation and then see if the board would be supportive and endorsing it. Whereas autism is the result of a neurological disorder that affects the normal functioning of the human brain and can affect anyone regardless of race, ethnicity, gender, or socioeconomic background. And whereas symptoms and characteristics of autism may present themselves in a variety of combinations and can result in significant lifelong impairment of an individual's ability to learn, develop healthy interactive behaviors and understand verbal as well as nonverbal communication. And whereas the effort to address autism continues, doctors, therapists and educators can help persons with autism overcome or adjust to its challenges and provide early accurate diagnosis and the resulting appropriate education, intervention and therapy that are vital to future growth and development. And whereas ensuring that persons living with autism have access to the lifelong care and services needed to pursue the full measure of personal happiness and achieve their greatest potential. And whereas the town of Simsbury is honored to take part in the annual observance of Autism Awareness Month and World Autism Awareness Day, in the hope that it will lead to a better understanding of the disorder. And therefore I, Eric Wellman, First Selectman, do hereby proclaim April 2020 as Autism Awareness Month and April 6th, 2020 as World Autism Awareness Day in Simsbury to raise public awareness of autism and the myriad of issues surrounding autism, as well as to increase knowledge of the programs that have, that have been and are being developed to support individuals with autism and their families. Um, and with that, I wanted to see if there was a motion effective, uh, tonight, April 6th, 2020, to authorize me, Eric Wellman, to do a proclamation in support of Autism Awareness Month.
So move.
When are you gonna check in?
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, that motion passes unanimously. Uh, members of the autism community, uh, typically join us for this presentation. That's obviously not possible tonight. So I did want to read one letter that was shared with me. My name is Jack Knoll. I am a 19-year-old Simsbury resident with autism. It's important to light it up blue to spread awareness about autism, which affects 1 in 54 people, according to Autism Speaks and the Centers for Disease Control. When I was diagnosed with autism at almost age three, the rate was 1 in 250. When Simsbury lights up blue, they're sending a positive message for people with autism. The message is that we should treat others the way we want to be treated and be loving and supportive. Uh, during Autism Awareness Month, uh, I would like people to learn about acceptance. Autism is a spectrum and everyone on the spectrum is no less than any other person. When you learn about autism, please learn about how to be accepting of people in schools, jobs and in the community. Thank you, Simsbury. So I thought that was very well put. And, um, thank you to the Board of Selectmen for, uh, for your support. So when folk is blue for the remainder of April, you'll know why. Is there anything, uh, that anyone else wanted to add on this topic? Okay. So I'll move on to, uh, the First Selectman's Report, followed by the Town Manager's Report. To the Simsbury community, first and foremost, my thoughts are with the members of this community and the thousands of people across the state of Connecticut and our country who have tested positive for COVID-19. As of this evening, there are 10 confirmed cases in Simsbury, although the true number is likely higher. My thoughts are also with their caregivers, first responders and medical professionals everywhere who are on the front lines of this crisis. Here in Simsbury, we are incredibly fortunate that our town has the highest caliber of professional leadership. Under the direction of Maria Capriola, our town manager, Simsbury is taking the steps needed to keep our residents safe while maintaining continuity of service. Department heads are implementing operational plans to ensure essential services will continue as we head toward what is expected to be a peak in the next couple of weeks. I have full confidence that Simsbury is prepared. The best way to ensure that you're getting the most current information from the town is to subscribe to news and announcements to have town news delivered directly to your email. You can, uh, visit simsbury-CT.gov. Right on the homepage, uh, click on subscribe to news and then you can give your email address. Uh, in partnership with SCTV, we've also been recording a weekly press briefing that summarizes the steps that police, fire, EMS and social services are taking to ensure that our community is prepared and safe. Um, that can be viewed at simsburytv.org. And if you're looking for more in-depth, uh, coverage of our local response, I encourage you to watch the latest meeting of our Public Safety Subcommittee. Uh, that committee continues to meet weekly, Thursday mornings at 8:00 AM to share information to ensure that our agencies are acting in a coordinated fashion. These meetings can be watched live on SCTV and they're also archived on SCTV's website. Again, that's simsburytv.org. I wanted to extend a huge thank you to the Ladies Auxiliary and the Simsbury Volunteer Fire Department, which organized a tour of the town by the Easter Bunny aboard a fire truck yesterday. This was an incredibly creative solution to celebrating the season during a time of social distancing. My daughter loved the, uh, following the fire truck online through the app and then sitting at the end of our driveway as the truck drove by. I heard from numerous residents how much this gesture was appreciated and we thank you. I also thank the vast majority of our residents in this community who are taking social distancing measures seriously. However, there are still some who have not gotten the message. Uh, town facilities are closed, including basketball courts, tennis courts, playgrounds and fields. And I encourage residents, uh, to continue to reach out to us if they see activity in these places. Uh, our police are taking notice and they will take steps if necessary to enforce these closures. Finally, I'm impressed on a daily basis seeing acts of kindness occurring throughout our community from donations of face masks to volunteer shoppers. Uh, thank you to residents who've reached out looking for ways to assist. Our social services department is continuously in need of donations. Uh, they're taking non-perishables, gift cards to gas stations, supermarkets and laundry mats. Those can be dropped off in a secure lockbox that's outside of Eno Hall. With everything else going on, our process continues to adopt a budget for the upcoming fiscal year. At our last, uh, selectman meeting, the board sent a budget to the Board of Finance that keeps taxes essentially flat in the coming year. Um, we are aggregating budget information on the town website. The budget that the Board of Finance ultimately sends to referendum could include some other changes. Uh, but I, I will characterize that the consensus among our boards is to, uh, is to do what needs to be done to keep taxes at least flat, uh, in the coming year. Wanted to also highlight some important dates in the process. Uh, April 7th, tomorrow, the Board of Finance is meeting, uh, to discuss the budget and possibly send the budget to, um, uh, to public hearing. Uh, April 21st, uh, or, uh, May 7th, uh, the Board of Finance holds a public hearing, um, that would be closed, uh, to the public per the governor's order, but a public comment would still be accepted in writing. And then, uh, the May 30th is when the budget referendum, um, would tentatively take place. And that's assuming that no executive order is, uh, still in place, uh, forbidding that. The US Census continues throughout the spring and residents should have received a letter from the Census Bureau. It's an easy thing to ignore with everything else going on, but it's really more important than ever that we're all counted. The census determines how much federal money communities receive for all kinds of things, including public health emergencies such as this. The form takes 10 minutes to fill out online, my2020census.gov. You can also respond to the survey by phone or mail. Finally, May 12th is Simsbury's 350th birthday as a town and an amazing group of volunteers have been planning events throughout the year to celebrate. The opening ceremony was set to take place on May 17th. Due to current events, that's been indefinitely postponed. Other events including River Day, the last weekend in June, uh, September Fest and the closing gala in November, um, are still on. Um, but those will obviously be reevaluated if needed as time gets closer. You can learn more about, uh, what's coming up at simsbury350.com. I can't say thank you enough to the volunteers of the, uh, 350th Celebration Committee, to the numerous businesses and individuals who've made generous contributions to these events. And I have no doubt that Simsbury is going to throw, uh, the birthday party, um, that it deserves, even if that birthday party is somewhat belated. Let me turn things over now to Maria, who has the Town Manager's Report.
Thanks, Eric. Hello, everyone. Um, first I just want to start off by thanking and commending our Board of Selectman members, um, our Farmington Valley Health District, our public safety partners, our staff. Um, everyone is doing everything within their power to ensure that our essential services remain in place. Um, we have an incredibly remarkable group of talented people, um, who are just doing really great work right now. I'm, I'm just really proud of everything that everyone is doing and I wanted to thank them for their efforts. Um, to keep everyone safe, excuse me, sorry, I have seasonal allergies right now. Um, to keep everyone safe, our buildings are closed to the public. Um, our staff is still operating, uh, mostly remotely from our administrative buildings. Um, they are operational by phone, by email. We have online services. Um, if folks believe that they have an urgent matter, we encourage you to reach out to us. And on a case-by-case basis, at staff's discretion, uh, we can see if we can accommodate with an appointment. Our public works crews, um, our parks and golf crews have modified their schedules and their work practices to ensure that critical infrastructure is being maintained and fully operational. A very good example of this is our wastewater treatment facility. Uh, as Eric mentioned, our skate park, playgrounds, basketball courts, tennis courts, paddle tennis courts are closed. Um, our parks, open space parcels and trails do remain open for passive recreation such as walking and hiking. Our community's parks and recreation staff, um, is again doing just incredible work, uh, making sure that these parcels are as safe as possible and, uh, working to keep them accessible to help benefit our residents' mental, uh, and physical wellbeing during this time. We do request that people using our trails, uh, respect social distancing practices and keep safe distances from, uh, from other patrons. safe distances from other patrons. Recently, in consultation with our transfer station operator, we have temporarily closed the transfer station at Wilkert Road. In order to meet needs of our residents, you can contact your waste hauler if you do need an additional recycling bin, if you need curbside bulky waste pickup, or if you need a dumpster. We also have a website, paintcare.org, if you need to dispose of paint and paint materials. And if you do have an urgent matter that you believe needs additional attention, to please contact our Public Works Department at 658-3222. Our meetings are closed to the public through at least April 22nd. The governor's executive order could extend that time period. But again, you can watch us live, and we do encourage folks to check our website regularly for updates, as well as to follow our social media accounts. In closing, I have just been touched by the kindness and generosity of our residents. Community members are helping their neighbors, they are donating food and toiletries, and they're volunteering their time to assist our fellow residents in need. This is truly a special community, and I'm very honored to be your chief executive during this time. We thank you for your patience and your understanding with us as we move forward in these uncharted territories. Non-virus-related items, our Hometown Hero program, we are now accepting applications for that annual program. This is a really wonderful way to recognize our community members who make a positive difference in all of our lives. And so we are accepting applications for that program online and through email through the end of April. Some positive news from the Connecticut Main Street Center. Simsbury, specifically the Ensign Nation project at 690 Hot Meadow, was one of eight award recipients. They received the Preservation and Adaptive Reuse Award, so congratulations to them. I know that they do hope that when the pandemic is lifted, that we can sort of go back to having normal events and ceremonies and things of that nature, that we'll be able to properly recognize all the folks who are part of that work. And lastly, we have Aquarian Water is doing a water main replacement project that is over on Sims Croft Place in Fairview Street. That was actually beginning today, and we do expect that work to conclude by the end of May. We have information about that project available online and at the link in my report. And that concludes my report this evening.
Okay, thank you, Maria.
Thank you.
Moving on to Selectmen Act. Item A is a resolution to extend the budget process timeframes. At our last meeting, you might recall, we adopted a resolution to extend the process by about a month pursuant to the governor's executive order. The governor then issued another executive order, which removes any in-person voting requirements, and it indicates that the Board of Selectmen needs to designate the town's budget-making authority as the final body to adopt the budget and set the mill rate. In this case, that's the Board of Finance. Maria, anything you wanted to add to this item before we open it up?
No, I think you covered it very well. Thank you.
Okay. Were there any questions from the board? Is there a motion effective April 6th, 2020, to adopt the attached resolution extending the timeframes associated with the fiscal year 2021 budget development process and authorizing the Board of Finance to adopt the final budget, should Executive Order Number 7I remain in effect after May 21st, 2020?
Big motion.
Second.
Second.
So I heard Jackie move it, and Mike seconded it. Any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Item B is Property Tax Deferral Program and a Low Interest Rate Program. So at the very beginning of the month, the governor issued an executive order that was intended to provide financial relief to taxpayers who need it. One is a tax deferment program, which allows eligible taxpayers to defer their taxes for up to 90 days. The other is a low-interest rate program, which reduces the interest rate on delinquent property taxes from the usual 18% to 3%. Maria, it's my understanding that we must adopt one of these. We can adopt both of these, but I thought it would be helpful if you were to perhaps give us a little more information, including some of your analysis on what the implications are of each of these.
Sure, absolutely. And I may ask Amy and/or Colleen to jump in. So again, this is rapidly evolving, and Amy did prepare a cash flow analysis for us to the best of her ability, based on information that we have available. And we took a look at the two options in terms of, again, our cash flow, administrative ease. Again, we have to, our understanding is, select at least one of these options. We could adopt both of the options. One of the options would provide about, we estimate, was the tax deferment program, which was $40,000 in lost revenue. The estimated impact of the low-interest rate program is about $50,000 in revenue. If we were to adopt both programs, the estimated loss in revenue would be approximately $90,000. We did take a look to see if we were to implement just, you know, one of those programs or both of them in aggregate. What would that have in terms of a mill rate impact if we wanted to budget for that accordingly? And with the budget that you all readopted to send to the Board of Finance, even if we were to adopt both programs, we believe, planning for that lost revenue, we would still see a mill rate reduction. But again, we could essentially plan for that lost revenue. At this time, based on the information that we had available, we felt that if we were to proceed with one of the programs, that we would recommend the low-interest rate program. OPM did some guidance on this today, but we just received that around 4:30. There's still, I believe, additional forms and guidance to see in terms of eligibility. And we do have to take action on this by April 25th. And I would just ask Amy or Colleen if they have anything that they'd like to add?
Hi, this is Amy. Now, I think Maria covered it pretty well. I think the only thing that is not in the memo that I think I would put up for consideration is that the deferment program is for only a limited number of individuals that meet certain eligibility requirements. The 3% interest is for everybody. So just kind of thinking about the population as a whole, where even if you don't meet the eligibility requirement, if you have the 3% interest, say you want to use, say, put your property taxes on a credit card, so to speak, and have that cash flow available, it gives everybody the opportunity to do that, as opposed to just those that are limited to the eligibility requirements of the deferment program. So that's all I have to add for that. I don't know if Colleen has anything.
Just, this is Eric, just a clarifying question, Amy. Are you saying that with the deferment program, would that apply to anyone who qualified, or does it cap the number of people that qualify?
So it pertains to anybody that qualifies. We did get the updated guidance, like Maria said, around 4:30. One of the things that I did read in the guidance that was given is that the Board of Selectmen can extend it beyond the limited eligibility requirements of the program. So I believe the program, don't quote me on this, but I think if you can attest that you have taken a 20% hit in your income, then you would qualify. But the Board of Selectmen can vote to extend that to, say, everybody in the community. They do have the ability to include other groups other than those that are limited with the eligibility requirements that were put out.
Thanks, Amy. What questions do other board members have?
Amy, this is Sean. So what do we budget for interest revenue currently from delinquent taxes?
We budget $250,000 for the year.
So we're basically, so we're saying 20% of that is not going to come in as a result of this potentially?
So yeah, that's a super conservative estimate. I mean, I have no way of knowing. We've never been in this type of position, but I think that's a fair enough estimate where I would be comfortable that. I doubt it's going to go beyond that if we're in this 90-day period. If he extends it beyond the 90-day period, obviously, we'll have to revisit.
But again, we budget for a 98.5% or 99% collection rate as well, right?
98.5%, correct.
98.5%, right. So theoretically, the lost revenue can potentially fall into that 1.5% that we might collect. But I mean, given the uncertainty, that's up in the air as well, right? So.
Correct.
So to Maria's point, hard to peg this number, but seems like the right thing to do, to try to pull some levers to help our folks out in town if they need it.
This is
Wendy.
Yeah. I had a couple of thoughts. My first question was, why not offer both options to the residents? And this was, I know that we didn't know the guidance or how many people would qualify, and also the administrative pressure on implementing this is still kind of TBD, because I think you guys would have both for both of these. You'd have to follow the requirements. And I did read about if an apartment owner, you know, wanted to qualify, they'd have to prove that they were passing it off to their renters. So there is quite a bit, but I just thought that, you know, it seems like people are really going to be hurt. We don't know when we get through this, what things are going to look like. And the other, so I agree with the low-interest rate for sure. I was leaning towards both of those, and the fact that we have to respond by the 25th, and we don't have another meeting to, like, relook at this later, moved me to want to okay both of them now. Those are my comments.
Yeah, Wendy, I don't have a calendar in front of me. Do we, when is our
27.
Oh, the 27th, okay.
So if it was sooner, we could do one and then do the other, because if we knew more, but we don't have room for that.
Right now, there's a question for staff. Do we, do you feel like you have a handle on what the process would be for bedding people for the 90-day extension? Or is that something that's going to become clearer in the days to come?
Yeah, I think that's something that's going to become hopefully clear in the days to come. Colleen, do you want to maybe speak to how your professional association is tracking this issue?
Yeah, like we said, it just came out late this afternoon. So I have not seen, I mean, I'll check with everybody to see what the towns are proposing to do. I have the application in front of me right now that the residents would have to fill out. You know, they don't have, obviously, for 3%, that just gets everybody.
Right.
But for the landlord and for residents, if we're going to do the deferred, it doesn't say what the paperwork is that we would be taking, you know, for me to prove that it resulted, it said since March 10th of 2020, I have either, one, you know, been furlonged without pay, number two, had my hours significantly reduced, or am unemployed, and this has resulted in at least 20% reduction of my household income. It does not give us anything to say what that paperwork would be that I'm going to supposedly collect from these people. You know, I'm going to find out from our association, the Tax Collector Association, and Adam Cohen, who is the attorney for the tax collectors, to see, you know, somebody's going to come up with some generic other form that we can have the people fill out.
Okay, thanks, Colleen.
At this point, we don't have anything.
Are there other questions from board members?
Yeah, hey, guys. So this is just purely, hopefully, informational. As I read here, I've heard the reference, this is fresh off the presses, so we had a lot of intangibles here. But for the deferment, we note, one of the considerations is the potential impact on staff time to process applications, which you've spoken to that. Just clarity, is that comment made because we may need to bring in additional resources to meet all the application flow within the time? Or is it, should we be prepared because something else may be pushed to the side for that? What is the intent behind that comment? It doesn't bear on the decision of which way I'm facing, just want to understand the comment.
I personally, what, the thing that's going to be the problem is, depending on when the tax bills go out, normally, the tax bills go out the very end of June. The deadline to file is July 1st. You know, so we'd have to try to push to get the tax bills out sooner. That's still only leaving probably a week and a couple of days for people to come in to file. I'm sure we could, you know, maybe somebody from the assessor's office, or, you know, I mean, I'll talk to Amy. You will have to discuss it, Maria, to see, you know. We have no idea, the problem is, we have no idea how many people would apply for it.
Okay, so it's
That's the other thing.
Here we go, asking a question where you just said, "I have no idea." So I'm pushing you on something. But it's not such, we've never been through it, but it's not something you would foresee that could be potentially so popular that we would need to go budget and go outside of the town hall's four walls to bring in additional assets to help us, or contract with an outside service to do it? Is that something, are we that far? Or is it something
I would be, I would be nervous to do that, because I don't know what the paperwork is that people are going to be handing us, what confidentiality is on there. I would be nervous about, you know, having other people come in to do it.
Okay. Yeah, I just noticed, nope, they were thinking that far. That we
Yeah.
Thank you.
Chris, this is Maria. I think most likely, what we would have to do is probably redeploy current staff on a temporary basis. If we did receive an overwhelming amount of the applications, again, I think to Colleen's point, it would probably be, you know, whether it's staff from the assessor's office, other staff from town hall, other staff potentially from other work sites, that we would really have to just work through who we would redeploy. But that's a possibility, if we were overwhelmed with applications.
Eric, this is Mike. I think we want to do what we can. I think we should pick one of the options and try to help out our residents, because a lot of people are being hurt by what's going on right now. And now, everybody's hoping that two weeks is going to be a turnaround, but it may not. So let's give them an option. We can always meet again and extend it, or have a special meeting if we need to.
Thanks, Mike. Are there any other, any other thoughts before I share an idea how we can move forward?
Honestly, I just think we should approve both options. I mean, at the end of it, we're talking about worst-case 90. You're right. And I think Wendy's point of just putting it out there. I know there's a lot of challenge here and everything else, but there's so much uncertainty, you know. I think we should at least put these out there as trying to help folks out, and then we want is to not do one of them, and then we decide we want it later and need to expand it, or otherwise, I'd rather have it and have nobody use it. But at least we attempted and did the right thing for folks, because we have no idea how many folks are hurting right now. We assume, we can all make assumptions, we can assume different industries, but we still for a while, Eric, who's, who doesn't, so.
Yeah, Sean, I
Hey.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, this is Amy.
Hi, Amy.
Yeah, sorry, this is Amy. So if you all are, if you all are moving in that direction of doing both programs, the only thing I would be concerned about is if you opened up the deferment programs to all residents. I would not be careful, I would not be comfortable from a cash flow perspective to open it up to everyone and just stick with the reduction in income of at least 20%. I was very conservative in my cash flow estimates, but I think I'd have to bring them down even more if people are going to take advantage of the 90-day deferment. And I don't, knowing, excuse me, not knowing what's to come, I just want to make sure that we have healthy cash on hand in case something else does arise in the next several months until we get through the deferment period.
Absolutely, Amy. I wasn't suggesting we expanded it further. I agree. Good clarification.
Yeah, after listening to Amy and Sean, I would agree with going to two options for the people who qualify.
I would agree as well, Eric.
Okay, okay. No, I'm fully, where my head is, I absolutely think that the right thing to do for our residents is to do both. What I was going to propose is that we move forward with the reduction of the interest rate to 3%. If there were additional operational logistical things that could be figured out in the next couple of weeks, we could always meet again in a special meeting and do the other one. But if the board is supportive of moving forward with both, I'm fully supportive of doing that as well.
The reality is, is we're still waiting for the state on so many things from a legislative The reality is, is we're still waiting for the state on so many things from a logistical standpoint.
Okay, I will.
Not to continue to be pessimistic with the state, but they're also a little preoccupied right now.
Absolutely. All right, so I'm hearing consensus that we move forward with both. Is there a motion effective April 6, 2020 to move forward with the deferment program as outlined in the Governor's Executive Order Number 7S as well as the low interest rate program as outlined in the Governor's Executive Order Number 7S?
Tie. Sorry.
Was that you on second, Wendy?
Sure, well, we had a tie, so.
Well, I saw your picture come up, so I'll.
Okay, I'll take it.
Is there any other conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Anyone watching, I know that when we have a better picture, how we're going to operationalize these, we'll use our news and announcements platform and all our other communication channels via social media, et cetera, to make sure our residents are aware that we're doing this and the process for applying. Item C is tax refund requests. Is there a motion effective April 6, 2020 to approve the presented tax refunds in the amount of $871.90 and authorize the town manager, Maria Capriola, to execute the tax refunds?
Who moved?
Jackie moved?
Second.
And Mike seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Item D is an acceptance of a donation from Simsbury Farms. Is there a motion effective April 6, 2020 to accept a donation of up to $12,000 from the friends of Simsbury Farms to fund tee box leveling projects at the Simsbury Farms Golf Course? I see Jackie's picture, so I'll give the second to Jackie. Any further conversation? With our thanks, of course. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Appointments and resignations. So Simsbury has three representatives on the Board of the Farmington Valley Health District. The terms of Melissa Appleby, Deputy Town Manager, and Sue Beardsley, Director of Health Services at the Simsbury High School, are both expiring. Is there a motion effective April 6, 2020 to reappoint Melissa Appleby and Susan Beardsley to the Farmington Valley Health District Board of Health for three-year terms effective April 24, 2020?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, that motion passes. Was there any feedback on the minutes from the meeting on March 23? Okay, then the minutes stand. Under, anything under Selectmen Liaison and Subcommittee Reports?
Just real quick, you teed it up before, but we are having a weekly public safety meeting. Maria, thank you for indulging us and helping coordinate that. We've had, what, three of them now? I think it's been a very productive meeting. Again, we we don't officially have the EOC open because it's not appropriate for the current situation, although Gary and Kevin Kowalski is our Emergency Management Director and Assistant Director are communicating with the state. We are having full communication, so we are operating as if the EOC is open. But not a good idea to put everybody in a room in the basement somewhere right now. Obviously, not this type of disaster. But again, the public safety meeting has been, I think, a good source of not only information for the public. Jennifer Katanas from the Health District tees off the meeting every time for us, gives us an update. She's been an outstanding resource for all of us on guidance. The chiefs of the departments, heads of ambulance, VNA, Sarah Nielsen from Main Street. All the portions of our community that need to connect from a public safety and from a messaging standpoint have been able to get together there. So again, it's a little bit later in the day to many folks' delight, although there's no coffee and donuts this time. But it's at 8:00 AM and it livestreams, as again, as Eric said. And again, it's making its way around Facebook and otherwise. And if folks have questions, same deal. We have public audience at at Public Safety and I'm happy to read any questions or letters into the record at the beginning. As I'm sure our public safety officials, town officials would would love to hear our questions from the residents, because the whole point of that group is to continue to get feedback and information out to the community, make good decisions and keep the town safe. So thank you, everybody, for continuing to participate in that meeting.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you, Sean and Chris, for attending those each week.
Sean, thank you for your leadership in each of these meetings.
Happy to do it.
I just wanted to mention something on the Board of Ed. They have not met since March 12. They had a special meeting. I reached out to Susan Selena today just to see what was going on. And there is a meeting next week via Zoom, so I get to sit in on that. They said they've started Phase Two of the Distance Learning, working towards a more regular schedule and new learning components. I don't really know. I don't have anyone in school anymore. They're going forward with the vacation. They said that it will give everyone a break and allow for like fine tuning the curriculum. And as far as the rest of the school year goes, there's a meeting with the Commission on April 10. And I guess to decide where they go from here. So I'll know more next week.
Wendy?
Yeah.
When, I mean, I don't, I don't want to get out of protocol, but one of the suggestions or one of the maybe the topics you could bring up for discussion is, yes, we started Phase Two of Distance Learning. No comment there. If they could, if there's a way to announce the schedule for the coming week with a little more lead time, that would be significantly more helpful than getting it just the day or night prior to the start of the week so that we can, those working parents as well can somewhat put together a schedule for the coming week as well to work, to work around our work schedules and such. Okay? That's, that's some feedback.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Wendy and Chris. Any other liaison reports? Okay. Under Communications, Wendy was good enough to draft a letter that the board, if we are supportive, can endorse. And up to this point, the Board of Selectmen as a body hasn't made a statement to the community about about what's going on with COVID-19. And I think this letter was intended to share our support to the community as well as as resources. And Wendy, is there anything that you wanted to share as far as context goes?
Well, first of all, I put the wrong date in, so there's that. And, you know, I know Maria's doing a great job with the town, but I really felt like as the elected officials here that we should send how we feel. And I'm hoping that this encapsulates how everybody does feel for our constituents and people that are out there, that we're thinking of them. We're all in this together, which is just kind of mind blowing. And that, you know, just follow the the plan that we're supposed to follow and that hopefully we all get through this at the other side.
Thanks, Wendy. Well, thanks for putting it together. And I wanted to, you know, before I see if there's a motion, is there anything that anyone would propose adding or changing to the letter before we were to vote?
I think it's well done. Thanks, Wendy, for writing it.
Thanks, Wendy.
Sure.
Okay. Is there a motion to, for the, to endorse the the letter as written and to share via our usual communication channels?
I'll make a motion.
I heard Jackie, and was that Sean?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Thanks again, Wendy. Anything else under Communication?
We're not going to come in and officially sign that, right? This is the e-signature thing here.
We're going to have to do the e-signature thing. Yep.
Good.
All right. There's one item that we're going to be discussing in executive session tonight. Since we had to change, since we had to, that's not how I meant to put it. Since we changed our form of government a couple of years ago, we've asked our town attorney to provide a legal opinion clarifying the duties of the town manager and the police commission as they relate to our police department. And we will be making that legal opinion public when it's appropriate to, after the Board of Selectmen and Police Commission have an opportunity to review the draft. So that's the context. Is there a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss the legal opinion regarding the town manager and the police commission duties with town manager Maria Capriola, deputy town manager Melissa Appleby, attorney Bob DiCrescenzo? Maria, is there anyone I'm missing here?
No, and just a reminder that so the Public Building Committee can use a CTV and get going with their meeting. We have a separate call-in number, excuse me, that was in the email with instructions for executive session. So if you could just hop off of this and then follow those instructions for the executive session.
Good reminder. Thanks, Maria.
Thank you.
So is, that, the motion's on the table?
All move that.
Okay, thanks, Sean. Do we have a second?
I could do.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll talk to, thank you again, and thanks to all who are watching. Everyone stay safe and well.